Okay, I want to call this meeting to order. At this time, please stand for the implication of Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Father, I lift Corinth up to you that we may lead this city with your principles. We also pray for peace and health for our residents and pray for your grace in our proceedings this evening, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, our Pledge of Allegiance City, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you.
Citizens' comment. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments about any of the council agenda items are appreciated by the council and may be taken into consideration at this time or during that agenda item. Council is prohibited from acting on or discussing items brought before them at this time. Okay. I entertain motion on the consent agenda.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve.
Second?
Any discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Public hearings. Conduct a public hearing to consider testimony and act on an ordinance amending UDC subsection 30.04, .05, .F escrow policies and procedures to increase the maximum amount for escrow deposits from fifteen thousand to one hundred thousand, case number ZTA 24-006, UDC escrow policies amendment. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, Melissa Daly will discuss and answer any questions you have about this proposed amendment to the UDC.
Thank you. This is a request to, as was mentioned, to increase the amount to a hundred thousand from fifteen thousand for escrow, and that is done for a variety of reasons, to put aside funds for public infrastructure, for various reasons that it can't be done at the time. Fifteen thousand is typically not nearly enough often for what is needed for that purpose. There was also a conflict within the UDC text. One paragraph said ten years, and this one said two years. Ten years is more reasonable, so we are suggesting striking that, essentially that whole part of that sentence. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, can you give us a real-world example of when this would be necessary and helpful?
We have one situation currently, actually, with Storage 365 that's going in off old 77, and they're required to put in a sidewalk. And because of the geography and also potential changes down the road to 77, it really doesn't make sense for them to go ahead and construct it now. So we've asked them to escrow that for when the city does rebuild that, hopefully, down the road rebuilt at 77. And we utilize those funds when we do that.
Any other question? Thank you very much. I'll get to a public hearing. Open it up, the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak to that issue? No? Close the public hearing. Entertain a motion on that item.
I'm just shocked no one wanted to talk about escrow. I would move to approve case number ZTA 24-0006 as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item number three, hold a public hearing to receive community input on fiscal year 2024, 2025 annual program of services. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the required hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget. And tonight, Ms. Bunselmeier, you get to hear from her for the third time tonight. She'll cover this item, and we'll answer any questions that you have.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As the city manager mentioned, this is the needed public hearing on the budget as required by the truth in taxation process. Very quickly, the city manager has established some budget priorities for this year's budget. It's to ensure that we're in accordance with financial policies, considering impact of our revenue reductions on future years. He focused a lot on infrastructure, traffic patterns, and vinyl impact of new development that is coming down in the downtown district, and also significant improvements within our Parks Department with the addition of a Parks and Recreation Director. And then probably the biggest item was to evaluate compensation, benefit, and work schedules, and this was primarily within the public safety sector, making sure that we can move our pay for police and fire up to seven thousand per year. So when we look at our property taxes, we had an eight-point-four-seven percent growth in our AV. That came up to about three-point-six million dollars. The biggest increase in that was just increase in existing home values, and that was up by almost five percent. When we look at our new value, that increased to about a hundred and six million dollars, so two-point-nine percent. And you can see the new value added this year was significantly greater than in prior years. When we evaluate our tax rate, the city manager has proposed a tax rate of point-five-one-four, and that is slightly lower than the tax rate from 2024. Our average home value increased by nine-point-two-seven percent to roughly about four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, and your average homeowner will experience about a hundred and sixty-two-dollar increase on their tax bill, bringing their tax bill up to two-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-eight As part of our truth in taxation process, the council has to look and evaluate several tax rate calculations. Our new revenue rate, which brings in the same amount of taxes as the prior year, the voter approval tax rate, which is the highest maximum tax rate that you can set by law without triggering an election, and then a de minimis tax rate, which is only available to cities with a population under thirty thousand, and that allows us to generate about five-hundred-thousand dollars more over the voter approval rate. When we look at our proposed tax rate for this year, we do fall within the no new revenue and the voter approval tax rate, so it does not require an election. And so that proposed rate again is point-five-one-four-zero-zero. In May of this year, we had a petition that was ratified, and we held an election for a senior tax freeze that would set a cap on the amount of taxes that our seniors would pay. As we learned more on this, this will not impact our budget for this year. Your base will be set based on the lower value of twenty-four, which is our current year, and next year of 2025. So we are estimating that that base for our senior tax freeze will be roughly about three-point-four million dollars. And when we do our analysis about what our historical average of projected growth on this class is nine percent on their values, and then also anytime your values go up, property taxes go down, we've had a one percent decrease in historical average, so we've included those in those calculations as well. So beginning with 2025, we do expect to have a reduction in our revenues for years, our property tax revenues of about two-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, and as property values increase, that increase will increase over the next ten years, going from six-hundred-and-eleven in 2026 all the way about to four-point-six million in 2035. Looking at our revenues for the general fund, our total revenues are twenty-seven-point-two million dollars. The biggest amount of revenue that we get is our property taxes, right at fifty percent, or thirteen-point-six million dollars, followed by sales tax revenue, which we anticipate about a ten percent increase. Total sales tax for next year, we're estimating at two-point-six million. And then finally, our, and I'm just going to hit on the largest revenue sources, our fire fees, which we get about four million dollars, and it's about fourteen-point-nine million dollars of our budget. That includes fire service agreements with the other lake cities, and also ambulance services that we, ambulance charges that we collect as well. Probably one of the notable other things that I want to note is that our grants did decrease by six-hundred-and-eighteen, and that is because last year we did have the Safer Grant, which we applied for six new firefighters. We did not receive that grant, so therefore, we're taking those revenues out of our budget. Moving into expenditures, our expenditures are twenty-eight-point-two million dollars. The largest category in expenditures is our personnel at nineteen-point-nine million dollars. That's about seventy percent of our total budget. And within this next year, we do have, it includes an increase of nine-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand for compensation and health insurance. And I would like to note that probably about sixty percent of that cost is related to public safety with the, again, the increase in their salaries up to, from sixty-five to seventy thousand on the starting pay. The budget also includes some decision packages. We have added six-point-five positions at five-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand. We've eliminated seven positions, the six firefighters that I just mentioned, plus an administrative assistant in the city manager's office for seven-hundred-and-eighteen thousand. And there is one position that was frozen, and that was a building inspector, of which we are not contracting out. Additional expenditures that the city manager has proposed in this year's budget, we have some ongoing for operations and maintenance that will increase the budget about five-hundred-and-four-thousand, and these are multi-year expenditures, and then some one-time capital outlay of nine-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand. So those are one-time purchases that will not be recurring in future budgets. And then again, when we look at some items that we don't have classified within all the departmental budgets, is what we call our inflationary items, and these are items that have just increased because of contractual obligations that we already have in place, about a hundred-and-ninety-six thousand, and those are for credit card fees, electricity, copiers, and property liability insurance. When we look at our financial forecast, and assuming our growth of four-point-five percent annual and then existing value growth of six percent, we also have looked in our resources, the impact of the senior tax freeze over the next few years, and then also we've got our SRO contract, which we'll be terminating in January of next year for the Lake Dallas ISD. The current year, our revenues do exceed our expenditures, oh, we have some one-time expenditures. But going into next year, factoring in those reduction in revenues, we do see that we're going to be short within our budget, about three-hundred-and-twenty thousand, but the city manager and myself have already been looking at ways that we can offset that. Going into twenty-seven, twenty-eight, then you do have your revenues that are just slightly over your revenues. But all in all, when we look at our policy target of twenty percent, the current year, we expect to be at twenty-seven percent, so well above that policy target. And then going into twenty-six to twenty-eight, we're still above those policy targets that have been established by council. Looking at our capital improvement program, we do have about seven projects, a total of ten-point-five million dollars. We are not issuing debt this year, or we're not proposing to issuing debt. We will use existing proceeds of bonds due to savings in existing projects, or unallocated interest earnings for about four-point-four million. We have six million dollars that is going to be given to us by Denton County from their bond election, I believe it was one or two years ago, for the Dobbs project, and then we do have budgeted a hundred-and-fifty thousand from impact fees for the Shady Rest project. And then one of the slides that we always like to show is just the cost of services. So when we factor out our expenditures and we take away all those other revenues, is how much are we actually, what are we using our property taxes for? And so an average home value of four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand comes out to about six dollars per day, and again, the biggest expenditures will go to your public safety with fire at one-point-three-six, fire at ninety-four cents of that, and then also our capital projects, which is the building of new streets that we've done, facilities, parks, and that is a dollar and sixty-one. And then we do have some administrative and things, and that you can see the cost. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council?
Thanks, Leanne.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll open it up for public hearing. Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Sure. Hi, my name's Lowell Johnson, 1000 Shady Rest Line here in Corinth, 76208. A couple of things. First, a comment, a compliment, you guys did a great job, it looks good. I like the budget. You're to be commended. It looks good. It looks like it'll work. We certainly hope it'll work. You know, I know things change as we go along, but also here is the representative, the folks of Corinth HOA. I'm the president of the HOA. God, now it just was one of those things. I got the job because nobody else wanted me, so I ended up up there for some years. But anyway, one of the questions that I have relates to that is the Shady Rest wastewater sewer line. Is that on our end or is it on the other end? Oh, Shady Rest, in towards Corinth Parkway, or is it up on the other end towards Shady Shore? Corinth Parkway. Towards Corinth Parkway, okay, so we're having problems with that. Any of the money from Denton County Road Fund coming to the Shady, Shady Shores Road work? Have you got any idea on that yet? Any timetables published anywhere? I was digging through Denton County stuff, and I had to call Judge Eads and say, where is this? And he sent me to a page that had no timeline, so anyway. Any word? Any thoughts, any word on that? Because I know that that's coming along. Now, in the budget, also, I wanted to ask a question about Maholom Park. You guys are doing a hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars in park development, Maholom Park. So are we redoing the park? Are we redoing the park? I'm good with that. Neighbors asked about that one, and I think, I think that's really about it. Is there, no, I think that's it. I think that'll cover it. The sewer line is the big one, because my neighbors are all tired of the RV and dug up, you know, we've had all three tech companies, we've had the gas, gas companies up there now, so, you know, I love this too, so they asked me to check on that, so I appreciate your information, your time. Keep up the good work. Remember, you guys are always accountable to us, the voters, so we appreciate the fact that you can be accountable, because there's a lot of governments that aren't, and that makes it very interesting. Let you know that I teach finance on the undergrad level, the first in Texas, and we teach government finance, and for thirty thousand, and I always use Corinth's budget because it always works out well. It's nice, it's clean, there's not anything crazy going on, so it makes it easier. There's some questions I got from the end later on about how she's calling out the things like the sales tax funds for economic development, the sales tax fund, still the enterprise fund, because we still teach business enterprise, so it makes it more sense. But anyway, I appreciate you hiring some of our graduates. There was one, she did the five, she does five dollars for me, I'm sure.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else who wants to speak to the budget? Okay. If not, I'll close the public hearing on the budget. Item number four, hold a public hearing, consider an act on an ordinance amending section 50.16 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Corinth to increase the water and wastewater rates currently in effect, providing for an incorporation of premises, providing amendments, providing for a cumulative repealer clause, providing a savings clause, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate that. I lied, you're going to hear from Leanne one more time. She'll cover this item and answer any questions that you have.
Last time, I promise. So last year, we hired Raph Telus to do a utility rate study on our water and wastewater rates, and we do this every three years, sometimes five years, to ensure that we have enough resources to cover the expenditures for infrastructure and operating that we planned within the future years. So when they did this study last year, they brought back this financial plan that said that we needed to do increases over the next three years to make sure that we could keep up with those operational plans, but mostly with the need for our infrastructure needs in the upcoming years. So in 2024, we did implement the plan. We did a five percent increase in fixed and volumetric, and then in with wastewater, we did a two percent fix and three percent volumetric increase, and then also increased our irrigation class by five percent. Now, looking into 2025, which is the year that we're, the rates that we're currently asking the council to review and approve, the study does call for a four-three percent increase in both your fixed and volumetric rates for water and wastewater. Now, the study did call for us to issue four million dollars of debt, but due to some increases in our operational budgets on the utility side, we could not balance both of those, so we did put the issuance of debt off for another year. So these are the rates that we're looking at. So again, it's two components. You have your fixed charges, and regardless of which category or which class, those fixed charges are in play, and so most of your residents are within that five-eighths meter, and so their fixed rate would go up a dollar forty-two a month. And then up at the top on the volumetric grade, your seniors, five thousand gallons are within your base rate, so there would be no charge for the first five thousand, but then your normal residential homeowners would have about a seven cent increase within that five-thousand category. Then also, commercial volumetric is the second charge, so that ranges anywhere from sixteen to thirty-nine cents, and then your irrigation, anywhere from eighteen cents to forty-three cents per category. When we look at our wastewater rates, for residential on your fixed, it would be a dollar-seven increase, and then on the volumetric would be twelve cents, and then again, your seniors would be the same increase with your commercial increase, and just slightly more at a dollar-fifty-two on your fixed rates, and then fifteen cents on the volumetric. So when we look at a comparison, right now, our average consumption for your residential class is about eight thousand gallons per month, and so within that, they pay about a dollar thirty-six, a dollar, excuse me, a hundred and thirty-six dollars per month. With this rate increase, their bill would go up to about a hundred and forty dollars, which is a four-dollar-and-ten-cent increase. Now, I have also provided the rates that we will discuss next year that were within the plan moving into 2026, so in 2026, if we move forward with that, you would expect another five-dollar increase on the residential class. Looking at your seniors, they currently pay about a hundred and twenty-one dollars. This would take them up to a hundred and twenty-four ninety-five, which is about a three-dollar-and-sixty-four cent increase. And again, when we discuss it next year in 2028 and continue with the plan, that would increase in to a hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy cents in 2026. Now, please keep in mind that this is both your water and your wastewater rates combined. When we look at commercial, your commercial on your five-eighths meter, this is at thirty-one-thousand-gallon analysis, which is the average for our commercial residents, or our commercial businesses, and so they currently pay about four-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and ninety cents a month. With this increase, their bill would go up to twelve dollars and seventy-two cents to four-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars and sixty-two cents a month. And when you look at your irrigation class, they're currently paying two-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents per month, and their bill would go up by six dollars and ninety-three cents to two-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. Now, one of the things is that we like to do, or that we do every year, is compare ourselves to all the other cities that receive water from Upper Trinity. And so when you look at the Upper Trinity cities within this community, we are third from the top. You have Crum that's at one-sixty-six eighty per month, using that eight-thousand-gallon comparison. El Cimwey, so that's Hickory Creek and Shady Shores, those are at one-sixty-two eighty, and then again, ours would be at one-forty and eighty-four. Now, even though we do provide this comparison with the other cities, one of the things to note is that you just don't know where each community is within their, I guess, from infancy to older communities. Are they putting in a lot of new infrastructure? How much debt do they have? So there's so many different factors that go into these rates other than just the purchase and cost of water. And then when we look at our commercial rates, we're almost on the upper tier most definitely, but you do have about five or six communities that are charging more for thirty-one thousand gallons, and with Crum being the highest at six-hundred-and-seventy-nine, and again, we're right there on that top cuff of four-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars and sixty-two cents. So when we look at our financial forecast, again, kind of like we did on the budget earlier, is we to look in, look at our forecast as to, you know, on the revenue side, as to what the plan had for this year and next year, so I'd incorporate those in. We typically get about a four percent increase from Upper Trinity Regional Water District, and this is for the purchase of water or for the treatment of wastewater, and then it also includes future debt issuance that we've got based on our five-year CIP. Now, potential offsets from this is, you know, we do think that if we continue with this current plan, that we might have rate increases in twenty-seven and twenty-nine, but we could offset that as within our debt. We have applied for a utility relocation and project savings grant reimbursement of five million for the relocation of power lines along 35. The problem with that is we just don't know when those revenues are going to come in, so we'll just have to monitor that. And then again, within the next year, we'll be looking at our CIP projects and reprioritizing those, and maybe pushing things out to make sure that we don't have as significant increases within the, within the years. But right now, within the current year, our revenues do exceed our expenditures, and so our projected fund balance is at twenty-five-point-seven percent, which is above our policy target of twenty-five percent. Looking into next year, we're still in line. Again, this is within what was planned within the rate study, about nineteen-point-one million, both for revenues and expenditures. And where you start seeing that we start, our expenditures started seeing our revenues is in year twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine, and again, this is because of the future debt that we currently have within our plan. So those are those items that we'll just need to look and see how we can manage those in those years to minimize any impact on our rates. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any question, counsel? Thank you very much. All right, I would enter. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anybody that wants to speak to this issue? I'll close the public hearing. I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I move to approve the amended ordinance section fifty-16 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Corinth to increase the water and wastewater rates.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? It's unanimous. Okay, business agenda. Consider an act on approving an economic incentive and performance agreement between Corinth Economic Development Corporation and EDM Development LLC. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a recommendation for an agreement that we discussed a couple of weeks ago with the developer of the Magnolia project to help him offset some of the costs associated with bringing in a new restaurant into that facility, and the agreement has been approved by the UDC, and this was for an amount of twelve-thousand-five-hundred dollars with some provisions that they make, at least twenty-five thousand dollars worth of investment into that improvement. And I know we discussed that a little bit last week, but Emma and I are here tonight to answer any questions if you have.
Are there any questions from council? Okay, then I'd entertain a motion on that item.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second?
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Council comment and future agenda items. The purpose of this section is to allow each council member the opportunity to provide general updates and or comments to fellow council members, the public, and our staff on any issues or future events. Also, in accordance with section thirty-point-o-eight by the Code of Ordinances, at this time, any council member may direct that an item be added as a business item to any future agenda. Mr. Burke.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Garber.
I have two things. The first is, I wanted to thank Mr. Johnson for being here this evening. Anytime we get an opportunity to see somebody that's put so much time and effort into the city over the years, it's nice, and now he's off creating future city and civic leaders, and I think that's great. Number two is the budget podcast is up, both parts one and two, so if you want to watch something that I find exhilarating, but you may not, please feel free to click on that link, it'll help us out.
Israel.
I just wanted to ask that, hopefully pretty soon, we could discuss the ordinance section ninety-four-point-thirty-six, the noise nuisances, because there's been a lot of talk about that on some of the social media pages, just see if there's anything we need to change about that.
Mr. Pickens.
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Campbell.
Mayor, just real quick, you'll know, anytime I have an opportunity to embarrass any of the staff, I like to take that opportunity, so I just wanted to single Melissa out, and she's really panicked right now, but a couple of weeks ago, she took her exam to become a certified economic developer, which is not an easy test to take. There's a lot of, there's a lot to it, and I won't bore you with all that, but we're proud of you for doing that. We appreciate it. Congratulations. Yeah. She did pass.
Okay. She said she took it.
Took it.
I don't know if you're waiting.
Proud of her just for tailing you.
She did pass. Proud of you for taking it and passing.
Yay!
And we do have Pot, I'm going to say it wrong, Potoberfest this weekend at Agora.
And I believe we do also have the nine-eleven walk across the bridge, I think that's Sunday, at what, is that six-thirty?
Yep, six-thirty.
Okay. So if you want to walk across or meet the other side of the lake at midpoint there, you're welcome to come down and do that. And are you now a doctor?
Well, I will graduate in December. I'd like to get my PhD, my letter, but I should be done, defended and everything, but it takes two months.
Hey, that's awesome. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Also, I reminded Scott that about Pop-Toberfest, but it's actually not this weekend, it's next, so.
I knew that.
I wanted to.
I knew that, Kelly.
Sorry.
Okay. So at this time, we're going to executive session on, just on section five five one point oh eight seven, Economic Development, and section five five one point oh seven four. So we're going to executive session at seven thirty.